Please turn off all cell phones. The agenda, Pompton Lakes zoning board of adjustments, July 25th, 2023. The following is the agenda of the regular meeting of the Pompton Lakes zoning board of adjustment. The meeting is to be held in the municipal building. In the municipal building, 25 Wenix Avenue, on Tuesday, June 25th, 2023, beginning at 8:00 p.m. A written advance notice as required by NJ SA 10-4-1 has been provided of this meeting at least 48 hours in advance of today, given the time, date, and location and to the extent known at the time of the agenda of this meeting. Such notice stated that formal action may or may not be taken. This meeting will be video recorded and will be broadcast or later viewing for the public. The notice was posted on the bulletin board outside of the offices of the municipal clerk reserved for this and similar announcements, provided to the suburban trend, the newspaper designated by the council and planning board to receive such notices and filed with the borough clerk. Stand for flag. Ladies and gentlemen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You want to throw out the vote office? Can I please hear a roll call?
Yep. Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Mr. Abate?
Here.
Ms. Curran?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Ms. Bernstuck?
Mr. Rowan?
Here.
Mr. Abate?
Here.
Mr. Nook is excused. Mr. Luciani?
Here.
Mayor Sarah and Eric Doye. Oh, Mr. Figula.
All right, we have correspondence from the Wayne Township. We have correspondence also from Pompton. And everyone had an opportunity to read those correspondence. And does anyone have any questions or statements about those correspondence? So move forward. All right, we're going to go to application BOA 23-03, Willow, 23 Willow Avenue, Pompton Lakes. Are you present?
Yes.
Please step forward.
Mr. Sadisov, if I could address one of the things from last meeting, I misread the survey. And so, you know, the back and forth about whether or not you needed to go to the governing body to get the permission to cross, which I thought at the point, my mistake, and I apologize. My understanding is that you cleared up with Sal and I talked to the borough attorney. So I think that's clear. I apologize. Don't think you wasted, you know, lose any time, but despite councilman in the line there trying to talk some sense into me, I still missed it. I haven't forgotten. I apologize.
Please have a seat.
I didn't know like to swear anything.
It's still your main, your main warning.
Willie?
Yes.
Don't forget, we didn't do the mess.
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
Let's step back a few minutes and go over the minutes.
We can stay there, which got.
Stay right there, that's right. The minutes from the regular minute, from the regular meeting on June 27th, 2023. Everyone had an opportunity to review those minutes. Any corrections or statement about those minutes? Can I get a motion to accept those minutes?
Shall move.
One second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Abate?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Abate?
Present.
Mr. Luciani?
Here.
Mr. Figula?
Yes.
Okay, so now let's proceed to the application. Okay, so this is a continuation from our last month's meeting. We have some things that needed to be cleared up. Some things had to be corrected. So I want you to just where we next here, let's write your project again and then quickly summarize that and this way we can move forward.
Okay, so I'm looking to put a garage in what I would consider my backyard, but it touches maple ass, so it's considered a front yard. And we need a variance to put a secondary structure in front yard.
Okay. Okay. The application that he needs for the roof, I know that has to be filled out. Is that something that we have to do?
I believe he, Sal does that.
Sal does that.
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we.
I'll work with, I'll work with Jeff, I have it already for him. Yes.
For the apron.
So the question was about the apron onto doors highway. All right, everybody, that was one of the questions that we had. So that is something that needs to be worked out with the town and Sal and the applicant have had that dialogue and there's things that they need to fill out in order to move it forward. The other question became of the tree that is just adjacent to his property. And we were concerned about the trimming of that tree. We talked about that. And I know that the applicant reached out to the shade tree commission. Randy from the shade tree commission is here. And should we ask Randy to come up and testify?
The applicant is okay, it's still his presentation. Yep.
Okay, so Randy, if you would, please go on up and talk about the issue with the tree that's just adjacent to his property.
I could swear in real quick. Raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Randy, 443 Moncler.
Supposed to spell your last.
About my last name?
Yes.
H-I-N-T-O-A.
If you swear or affirm the testimony and give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Got an email through the shade tree commission and went to the location, looked at the tree. Just for the record, let me state that I am not an arborist and I am not a New Jersey certified tree expert, just a volunteer for over 12 years for shade tree commission. And in my opinion, it's a line of sight issue with lower limbs from the tree. Those limbs could easily, the tree is healthy enough, those limbs could be elevated. I don't see no reason why, once the limbs are elevated, that this application should be denied. There's no reason at all that I can say from the shade tree perspective.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anyone have any questions for Randy from the shade tree commission?
Thank you for your testimony.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, so when we were talking about the applicant and the variances that are going to be requested, we did make an amendment right on the generator, I believe it was? That was adjacent to the house or the shed?
I thought that was the additional was for the driveway.
The driveway, that's what it was. Thank you. And we had agreed to put that on to the application.
Correct.
As far as I'm concerned, that's all the questions that I had for this applicant, but we always open it up to the board. So is there anybody else on the board that has questions to the applicant?
Didn't we also discuss about drainage as far as what was going to be planned for?
I thought, the way I understood that, it was going to go back to Sal and actual instructions.
So drainage is part of the application from the building department?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And you did make some amendments to the stairs and everything after you pushed it back a little bit?
Originally, the architect had the retaining wall going on to the town right away. Cut that back.
Cut that back, right. And that showed on the.
The new plan. Yeah.
Anybody else? Name, Steve? Jared? Anything? That looks good.
Sure.
So we have to open it up now to the public.
Yep.
Okay. So what we're going to do now is we're going to open up the application and to the public for questions regarding the shade tree commission and also the applicant's presentation of the plans. Does anybody from the public like to come up and have a conversation? Now is the time to do so. As I see none, I will close that session. So shall we?
This would be a, so if it were to be considered, it would be a motion to approve the application for two variances, which include for an accessory structure in the front yard, which is not allowed, but building it in the location, which is five feet from the property line, which is the front property line, as well as moving the shed, which is a second accessory structure, also in the front yard, not allowed, which is moved to the left side of the plans, which would be 10 feet from the front yard line.
Correct. And a motion to.
Motion, and as Mr. Rowan just read that.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call.
All right. Okay, Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Mr. Abate?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Rowan?
Yes.
Mr. Abate?
Yes.
Mr. Luciani?
Yes.
And Mr. Figula?
Yes.
But you're approved. Next month, there'll be a written resolution memorialized. That gets voted on and presumably adopted, published, and then 45 days after that, you can go pull all your permits and build. You could go down there earlier before that.
Sign off on something.
Sign off, sign a waiver that you understand that there's always a chance that someone could sue to overturn this decision.
Okay. You'll have to get your project?
Thank you. Take care of yourself.
You're welcome. Okay, so now we're going to go on to the second application, BOA 23-01, Renee Sierra, 31 Orchard Street, Pompton Lakes. Are you here? If you are, please go forward.
I'm definitely not.
Nope.
Please.
We'll be testifying if you could both stand, raise your right hand, state your name left to right, spell your last, please.
Lindsey Genell, I'm an attorney.
Oh, you don't have to swear, you're sorry.
Renee Sierra, S-I-E-R-R-A, address 31 Orchard Street, Pompton Lakes, 07442.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Apologize to that.
Thank you.
Please have a seat.
Can you hold on one second? I'm going to change.
Sure you can, yep.
A reminder, better put the microphones closer.
One second. Okay. What's going on? Oops. Sorry. Do you want to follow me on? Yeah, let's do the follow up. It's up there, so you use the mouse and then there's another screen that tells the grant that you just handed in. Yep. I don't want to be on TV, so I screen.
Okay. We're here today to review the project for 31 Orchard Street. The applicant is in denial permit letter from the town in regards to a couple of variances request. So what I'd like to do at this point, I'd like to open it up to you and tell us about the project and why you're seeking the variance.
Good evening. My name is Lindsey Genell, I'm an attorney, I'm going to be representing Renee Sierra this evening. We're talking about property commonly known as 31 Orchard Street, also known as block 4500, lot 21 in the R4 zone. We're presenting this evening seeking a C variance of the building code, more specifically a bulk variance for lot coverage, side yard, and front yard setbacks. It should be noted that the setbacks are all pre-existing non-conforming conditions. By way of background, this property was completely destroyed on June 15th, 2022 due to an electrical fire. The cause was deemed to be electrical in nature and the house was a total loss per the insurance company. The applicant then proceeded to pick up the pieces and rebuild. New plans were drafted and the applicant was able to almost replicate the home with the exception of a few minor improvements that will make the home much more functional. As you will see on the plot plan provided, there are two changes from the previous structure. The first is a small 15 by 10 bump out in the back right of the property. A bump out in the back right of the property, as well as a small addition to the front left where the one car garage could be. The existing conditions plan and the proposed conditions plan are both on your plot plan that you have been provided. It's important to note that these two additions provide the additional structure needed to build on to the second level of the property. Specifically speaking, though, the deviations from the code are rather minor. The biggest one is the lot coverage. 25% is allowed, 28.9 is proposed, and currently it was 22%, which means that the new lot coverage will only be 3.9% more than allowed and 6.9% more than is already existing. So a less than 10% change in the lot coverage. In terms of setbacks, these were already pre-existing conditions. The very minor one is that we're going from 4.5 to 4.6 on one side, which is a .1, so it's a one inch difference. Again, this is a, this was a pre-existing non-conforming condition that was already present on the subject site. As per the application and as you'll see on the plot plan, the proposed changes don't cause anything from the house to stick out, it just fills in on the sides. So before I go into my legal argument, would you, would you like to ask any questions?
Well, I guess, I guess the biggest concern is, I mean, respect to your, what you've said about the minor thing on the left side as far as the setback. Previously, there was a garage there, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And that was not actually, did not catch on fire in the photo that we're seeing from the fire, from the fire department.
Oh, okay, I don't have any fire department pictures, so I'm.
So the fire department has raised the concern, which I would have to agree with, because if the structure was only six feet away, because between the two, the lot on the other side has a 3.4 setback as well, so you'd only have six feet between the two. And if that had been a two-story structure that was on fire, it's no doubt that the building next door would also have a fire. So that would be my concern.
Okay, and noted, I do have a letter here from, I mean, the Pompton Lakes, oh, this was the police, okay, saying that they didn't see any concern. So your concern is that the properties are too close together?
Excuse me?
Did you get this letter?
Yes, she did.
Oh, I'm sorry, I do see it.
Okay. One minute, so we do that.
Okay, I mean, I understand the concern, I guess my response would be there's already, it already exists, it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
As you can see, the garage, which had, did not even catch on fire, there's no, it's not as much a chance of combustion there unless you're, that is where the fire had started. But it's not two-story. The proposal is two-story, is it not?
For the, yes, it is.
Okay. That's, I think that that's a valid concern that the fire department has raised. I think that, my only suggestion is there should be more of a setback. I think there's a valid reason for it, especially in light of the reasoning applicants here with the fire damage home. I mean, it does happen.
I understand. I mean, my, our position is that, you know, it'll be new construction, all other codes, you know, all other fire codes will be satisfied. The garage structure was already there, so our argument is it was a pre-existing non-conforming condition.
I'm just wondering, we had an applicant come in before, when it's that close, can you fireproof that side of the wall to the house?
I'd imagine that that would be a possibility. I mean, we don't have the contractor here, but I mean, the applicant is here and if that's part of the resolution.
At least if it's going to be that close to whatever existing house, you've got that setback, I mean, I would fireproof at least that side of the wall.
Yeah, because.
When you say fireproof, what do you mean by that? I'm sorry.
Fireproof, so when the Zimmerman application came in, he had told Sal and Sal said if it was X amount of feet from it, it would have, I believe it was five feet or less, would have to be fire, would have to be firewalled down, know exactly what that consists of to do that.
It's hard, it's hard.
It's, yeah.
I do have a question, too. I'm looking at your diagram here. You have eaves on the house. Now, is that eve part of the 3.8? Or is it to the side wall of the structure? So is that taken into account that the roof will overhang and cause even, be closer to the?
To the front yard? Is that what you mean?
Side yard.
Oh, to the side yard?
Right.
No, I don't.
So the side of the roof, on the top of the roof, will that exceed the four, 3.8 feet?
No.
Or is it 3.8 feet to the side wall of the house?
Are you, I'm sorry, where is?
So if you're looking at this diagram.
Oh, I don't have that diagram. Okay. Is that on the?
Should we pass this along?
I have the big one.
Here you go, take mine, I'll share.
I have the large one, I can get the large one, here.
The question I have is, if you're looking at the house, you see the garage, you see a little bit of a space, and then you see the wall of the home, and then above the wall, obviously is the roof. And on the roof, the roof extends beyond the wall. So is your dimension from your property line to the edge of the roof or to the edge of the wall of the home?
I believe it's to the roof.
I don't see any dimensions on anything that would indicate that.
You can bring it up on screen, too.
Oh, okay. Well, on the plot.
The reason, I have no idea whether they're going to approve or not, but if it got approved for 3.8, and it turns out that those eaves are 3.2 feet from the line, you'd have to come back here again, so Sal couldn't approve the building. So I don't know what it is. That's, they want, I think they just want to make sure they know which piece of that house is closest to the line.
I believe the engineer included that in the calculate, I mean, I don't think that they would not have included that in the calculation.
That's happened before.
The engineer, the engineer has this.
I understand, but it doesn't clearly depict that, and it's happened before, and we need to make sure. So until.
So can we put a condition in, if there's a resolution, a condition that there, that there would be a resubmitted plot plan with that indication of the setback?
In order for them to grant a variance, and I don't know, so there's, there's concern about fire issues, so I don't pretend to know what they're going to vote for. But they would have, if they're going to grant a variance, they would have to grant it to a precise amount, a measurement, not something that'll be put on later on. So they would have to know. So as of now, it's submitted, but 4.5 feet?
It's 3.8 feet.
3.8 feet from the line. If that eve is 3.2, there would be no approval for it. And I don't know that to be the case, but that's the reason they're going through this.
It's really hard to read these plans. I, I mean, according to what I saw, it was a one foot overhang, but I can't really read these plans, so I need a magnifying glass, I'm sorry. To get to the.
I gave eighteen copies of this.
I see a 1.0 overhang, according to the side. 1.0, I assume is one foot. Is it one foot, so that would be?
Yes, one foot.
A 2.8 to the property line?
I think, I think the engineer accounted for that in the 3.8.
But we don't have that, we don't know that.
Well, have, I mean, it's in the plot plan. How's that, that's right.
Right.
There's a larger plan that you can read. The engineer sent me like 20 copies of that. I believe it's.
I think the question gets raised this way, maybe I would assume that they say it's existing 3.3 and proposed 3.3. The existing garage, which the picture, does not appear to have an eve that overhangs. So that edge, the foundation, if you're going straight up on the same foundation, that would be 3.3 feet. The home that's being proposed, that eve would be hanging past where the foundation is coming up from, the foot from, if I'm expressing myself correctly.
It doesn't count for here, because if you look at the existing, it's 3.4, but if you look at the proposed, it's 3.3. So that's where that extra foot would come in.
2.3, that'd be .1, that would be about 1.2 inches.
It's hard to read that.
If you're going by the existence, the way it was, if you're going by your property line, it's 3.3. So if you're going to go up and then you have the foot overhang of the eve, then you're beyond the 3.3.
Your 2.3.
Your 2.3. So that's what I see. So that's my concern, if the measurements aren't correct on plans.
Okay, I mean, I, obviously I can't attest to the measurements on the plans because I'm not an engineer, but you know, if there is a mistake on the plans, we'll certainly get them revised and resubmitted. Although before I deem the plans to be incorrect, you know, I would like the opportunity to speak to the engineer, though.
Sure.
Understood. So basically, then we would want to carry this motion, then as far as I'm concerned, because we need some more clarification.
I can understand that. Oh, yeah, if, if they're done, then yes, that's.
If that's what you're asking for.
Well, I mean, could we maybe address the other issues so we don't have to come back and do the whole application? Or, and we can just address this one issue, because there is the building coverage and the setback on the other side, too. If the sticking point is this one issue.
I'm not saying it's just the one issue.
Oh.
I'm just, I'm pointing this is out, I'm pointing this out because this is a, it might be a pretty big stumbling block, because the plans don't seem to be accurate. So the board can't look at this and make a decision for these application if the plans are not correct. We need some more clarification for the measurements.
And my stumbling block is the fact that the fire department says that it would be a significant risk. I don't think that we could possibly prove plans when we're being told that it proposes a serious risk to neighbors, the rest of the neighborhood. That has to be addressed in my opinion.
I wouldn't want to add anything with the board saying, but I think that. I wouldn't want to add anything with the board's side, but I think the concern is, if there's a concern that the fire department looked at it and said 3.3 feet is too close, if in fact the roof is 2.3 feet, the fire department presumably would be, as, would deem that as important. I think that's, uh, in order to, to make the best presentation and address probably what is the fire department's concern.
Okay. And, and def, and the overhang issue as well?
Yeah, that just changed, that if in fact it changes it, then it's not 3.3 feet, it's 2.3 feet.
Okay, so I will get confirmation from the engineer on that.
Just another question, what's in the surrounding neighborhood, how close are a lot of the houses? Like, what's the, you know, like the neighboring areas, like what's the layout of the, the neighborhood too? I think that plays a large part. It's the only one that's jammed up close compared to the other ones.
I, I personally drove by there, and I did take a walk back, and I did take a walk on the side.
Okay.
This house is unique, because it has the, the garage more front. Some of the houses have the garage deeper, beyond the house structure. So the garage is detached.
Yes.
Okay? And then a couple of houses over, um, it's, it's, the, the, um, community over there is very tight, but the way that they constructed the garages and detached them made it so that the, the buildings are not so close.
The physical separation.
And, and, and as Mary had said, the biggest concern, another concern we have, is the fire department has made it very clear that there's serious risk here. And because of the size of the, the structure is beyond just the garage, um, they're very concerned. So, so it's, it's a very unique neighborhood, um, and it is a tighter neighborhood, but the way that it's laid out, in my opinion, is, is not going to be this tight.
Yeah.
Especially with the structure being as tall.
Yes.
You can carry it, because they're going to have to do some more damage. Let's say carry.
Okay. So would you like to carry?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Okay, so it'll be carried, there'll be no further notes, to be continued to the next meeting in, uh, August. It's the fourth, fourth Tuesday in August.
Then at that point, um, we'll, uh, continue the conversation, and then if you think that the public would like to address the applicant's testimony, and that's when that will be.
Okay, so we'll get some clarification on that, um, overhang and the fire issue.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
So carry.
It'll be August 22nd is the date.
August 22nd. God bless.
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay, we are now going to move on to BOA 23 dash oh four, William and Ashley Diaz, I guess, uh, 132 Magnolia Avenue, Buffalo Lakes, New Jersey. Applicants are here, please come forward.
Sorry, I also have this log map up here, and I'm just gonna leave the FEMA, I'm, I'm just gonna leave your, just like, do it on, on, and you just spell that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, both be testifying?
Yes.
Raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
Michael Capo, C A P O, architect.
Hi, Ashley Diaz, D I E Z.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yep.
Proceed.
Okay. Get all my things in order here. Okay, so applicant is here to talk about their project on Willow, um, and, I'm, I'm sorry, Magnolia, um, um, and to discuss the reasons for denial from the town, and to talk about their project.
Welcome. So, um, this is basically a renovation and addition to the existing residence. Uh, the first addition that we're going to be doing is front porch, covered front porch off the front yard, which doesn't impact the front yard setback at all. Um, we're going to do an addition off the rear, eight feet, and then off the side, 16 feet, for two stories. Um, the variance we're asking for here is the rear yard. Right now, the existing house is 41.1 feet.
Excuse me, can I actually just pause for one second? Gotta get rid of that one.
Sorry.
I apologize. Just want to make sure I'm looking at the right plans.
We'll share.
Okay. Thank you.
Continue, please.
Okay. So, yeah, they're, um, we're going eight feet off the rear and 16 feet off the side. The existing rear yard setback is 41.1 feet, so that's where we're going to run to the variance. Eight feet will bring us to 33.1 feet. The first floor is just going to be basically enlarged, we're going to be taking out some interior load-bearing and non-load-bearing partitions, and just expand in the room, making the kitchens bigger, the dining room bigger, and the living room bigger. The second floor is basically an, an extension off the right side of the household, and you can see that on the plot plan, it's a shaded area in gray. And the new second floor addition is going to be comprised of small office and a new master bedroom suite, which has a toilet, a ba, a master bathroom, and a walk-in closet. We're going to add two small dormers off the front, just to break it up, because it looks like a long roof. And then we added the roof over the front porch and a roof over the front.
Okay. So I know this question's regarding the flood plain, uh, would you like to talk about that?
All right. So, and, and, we have a letter from FEMA that actually removed the structure itself from the flood plain. So there is a small portion on the property, it's off to the left side, I'm not sure exactly how big it is, but the structure is not in it at all. So this alleviated the, um, need for them to have flood insurance. So, that's basically what this letter says here.
So there's currently no flood insurance on this property, right?
No. I haven't had, since I, I moved there for five years, I never needed, uh, flood insurance.
And you said that's on, if you're looking at the house, it's on the left side, so your, your, your construction's going to be on the right side?
Correct.
Off the back?
Correct.
I have to, have to raise a little question here. Are you, is your argument that Mr. Polley made an error, and you want, this, this board would be the place to appeal, if in fact you believed he was in error? So he, he said it's in the flood plain, and you need a Loma to say, to say that, um, in order to do this construction, that, that's, was his position. If in fact you disagreed with that, you can, you, this is the board you appeal to, you didn't, you didn't notice that. You, you know, you didn't say that in your notice, that you were appealing his decision. It was, you know, there was some information on it, and he, his notice of denial said that you would have to provide, um, that the, the area on which you want to build, um, was removed from the flood area. So the board doesn't have the jurisdiction to overrule what he, now, because you didn't tell the, essentially, you didn't tell the public, hey, we want you to overrule what Mr. Polley said. Mr. Polley's position is that you need, this, this is subject to the flood plain. In order to, in order to appeal that decision, you had to tell the public that. So the notice, you can do, so that, that's my concern. You very well may be right, but you didn't notice the pu, I, from what I can read in the notice, the notice doesn't say that you want to appeal that decision. So he, as of now, Mr., he, he still says, his position is that he denied this application because of the variances, the setbacks, but also that you, that you are subject to the flood plain regulations.
So you mean, the, no, I'm sorry, the notice that we sent to the 200, um, I guess 200 feet?
Yeah, to that and to the, published in the paper, I was just reading it now. And so, so it does not say that you are appealing his decision about there, you needing a new, the, the MAP amendment, um, the Loma amendment. That, that's, that's the issue. That, that's the, that's the issue that I see, I want to make sure that this is done correctly.
So if after he took a look at this and changed his mind?
So I, I gave him this letter at the time, and I think I, I shared it with him as, as well and everyone, that prior to this, I gave him this letter before he made his decision.
And, and his.
That's not what he wrote on his denial.
Yeah, so he disagrees with that, and I presume he disagrees, because the Loma says that only the building is taken out of the flood plain, not the property. So not the whole property, so only the building, so there's no determination, I think, that two inches or two feet or 10 feet away you could build. It just said the structure as it existed was removed from the flood, from the flood area.
Did I misword you?
I don't know who you are.
The applicant, the applicant.
Are you with the applicant?
Yeah.
My son is.
So are you with the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah.
And you're going to apply testimony to who you are?
If they ask, if they ask you to be sworn in, you'll be sworn in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Come up here.
Sure.
Please raise your right hand, state your name, spell your last.
William Lawrence Jr. And I'm at 92 Woodhaven Drive, West.
Do you swear, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Okay. I wasn't ignoring you, it's just their show, so they have to answer.
Right.
Well, no, I understand that, and, and what, I sold him the house, and when I sold him the house, there was no flood insurance required. It was in a B zone. Then, like, three years, three years into them owning it, they had gotten a letter that they may have to carry flood insurance. So I called the elevation, uh, survey, I had him come, and he put the drone up in his car, and he took the shot of, it was, it was in the corner of the garage, that much, on the corner of the garage. Everything that they're doing is to the right of that. So none of that property has ever been floods. I've done real estate for 43 years, and I gotta tell you, you know, I mean, I would never, never let him buy that house if it was in a flood zone.
Okay. The, this is the question. Uh, this, the letter, the, the letter of MAP amendment, probably agreeing somewhat with what you're saying, not all, not completely details, was provided to the building official, Mr. Polley. Mr. Polley wrote in the denial, "House is located in flood plain, applicant is to produce NJDEP Loma, or all, or all flood plain rules to be adhered to, and elevation of structure will be required." If what you're saying is true, then it's a really good reason for this board to overrule Mr. Polley. The problem is, you didn't tell the public you want this board to overrule Mr. Polley. That, that's the problem, you, you didn't, you know, and I.
In your notice, you did not submit that.
Just said, would they have to come back a second time and just say, we are now, like, open a new case, is that the process? They open up a new case?
They could keep it going, they could continue on, and they could publish a new notice, and it'd still be on for next month, but I, the board wouldn't have jurisdiction. As much as I hate to say that, I thought what was coming was exactly what, I thought they, you know, they were just going to provide the information, not that they were going to say that he's wrong. And I understand that, that's, that the reason this board is allowed to hear appeals from the decision is because sometimes they're wrong. Completely understood, but you have to tell the public that. That, that's something that, that the public has to know, that you are trying to get that overturned. That's, that's the only point. So it could probably be continued, they just have to do this, they would have to do similar notice, telling the public and the newspaper, and we're appealing that decision.
You're appealing, Sal.
Also, the flood maps were redrawn about three, three years ago.
That's correct.
And lots of us, I, I live in town, I have been here for 50 years, I never had flood insurance. Three years ago, I had to get it, because the maps were redrawn.
Right, but the, but the, but the issue here is, is that when they applied and they put it in the paper, the reason for the, um, application is, has not been stated that they want us to find that he submitted, uh, his denial in error.
Right.
So that's the, that's, that's, but that's, but that's the root of what's going on. It wasn't submitted.
And I didn't know.
Of course not.
That.
Understand.
I mean, I've, I've probably been here 100 times to the town, and they didn't tell me that I had to submit the notice, I kind of just got the packet with the paper, this is the verbiage, submit it, submit it to within 200 feet, and.
Yeah, appealing a decision by an official in the town is a little bit different, but this is the board to do it, and it can be part of the application. I think typically, when you come, the applicant comes in for land use approval, they're not thinking you're appealing the decision by Mr. Polley. You're thinking you, this could, because the other two things, Mr. Polley said, you need the variances for the setbacks, so you're not saying he was wrong, saying, yep, I want that. So they presume that you are not appealing anything. That's, that's probably what happened here, and I apologize for it, but that's most likely, because you were not appealing his other, his other decisions.
Right.
You were saying, okay, you're right, I will get my permission, I'm got my permission for it.
Right.
Excuse me, but, okay, so in respect to what they're here for, in terms of the rear setback, uh, that's something that we have the authority to decide. But regardless of what they say about the flood, that's really not an issue that we can solve today, because we don't have enough information. And we would never have any say over what FEMA has to, to do as far as building, that's between the building department and the applicant.
You would have jurisdiction to hear certain appeals from Mr. Polley's decision, and if Mr. Polley was in error, they could appeal that to you here. That's one of the things they could do, but they haven't done that.
Well, they'd have to provide something very recent as far as the FEMA.
So this letter, yeah, this letter is from May 24th, 2023.
2020.
So I just contacted them.
So when I was looking at it, it was from 2020.
I saw. Well, that's when he did it initially.
Yeah, there was initially, in 2020 is when we first got, um, the survey with the drone, I went to Sal, told him that, um, and he said, listen, this is from 2020, you need to go back to, um, FEMA and get an updated one with the correct lot and block number. So I went back to FEMA recently, um, in May, told them what happened, they issued this with the same block and lot number as the town, um, and stating the structure was removed from the special flood plain. So I had like multiple conversations.
Right.
About it, so I was under the impression that.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
So, so, and, and the only thing that you didn't have, though, from FEMA, is showing them where you were going to build, even though we all can clearly understand reasonably that it's, it's not in the flood area, from what you're saying, but we have nothing that, you only have it for the existing structure, is that correct?
For the.
Existing structure.
Yes, yes.
And the, actually, just so you know the section, in the flood plain section of the code is section 16, and the section for getting variances, which says, this is where you'd get the variance, um, is 16 dash 15, variance procedure, tells you kind of what you have to do. So it's different than the regular zoning code, it's, um, but it does say that, you know, you come to the board of adjustment, and passed upon such applications, the board of adjustment shall consider. So the board of adjustment is the place to come for a variance from those flood plain, and that's kind of what you're asking, either that he was wrong, or you want a variance from it, but you have to tell the public, that's what you're doing first. That's, that's the first thing. In order for the board to grant the relief that you need, uh, and you very well may get it, but you have to tell the public first.
Okay.
Our engineer may have something else to say, I don't know. No.
One three three?
Okay.
Okay.
So like, you know, said, I'm repeating myself, but you very, very well may have very good reasons for them to grant it, but the public has to note, that has to be in the notice that that's the relief you're asking for.
You file a notice.
I was here so many times, I just wish, because I had so many conversations.
Right.
And we talked about this letter multiple times, so, I mean, of course, if I knew I was going against Sal's decision, I would have put it in the paper, so next steps would be notifying the public, same, same procedure, certified letter, and then coming back here in office.
Yeah, so this, 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 this would be continued. Yeah, so this, 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 this would be continued, and that notice would then allow the board to grant that additional relief.
So you're okay to, uh, they have to say that they're, they're okay with that, right? So you're okay with it, to, to next month, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so we have no resolutions, new and unfinished business. Mr. Jerry, do you have anything you'd like to add?
We have more, we do not have any, the last open space.
Okay, so, we're moving on from that. So what I'd like to do is open it up to the public, anybody in the public that would like to come and address the board, now would be the time to do so. I see none, so we'll close that public session. Can I get a motion for Jerry? All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Tom, do you want any of these facts, so you don't